...our student enrollment, we have about fourteen percent of our EV students are part of that number. And one of the things I want to point out, from twenty-one to twenty-two school year, at that point, my little studio, we had six-hundred-and-twenty-nine EV students. And within that two years, again, we've jumped up to one-hundred-and-seventy-eight students that we are serving. It is a program that is growing, and we are very proud of that. So that brings us as far as to the STAR progress, looking at our EVs compared to, again, our Gen Ed cohorts. And so lots of celebrations, the top category that you see is all tests. And I did make a revision, so yours might look a little bit different as far as the colors. And so on your document, that seventy-three and forty-one was at a yellow, because compared to last year, we went up one percent. And though that is, yes, a celebration, it did not fall under that five or more, which is why originally had it yellow, but then it's like, no, it is a celebration. So we're changing that to green, so that's why you see the difference. Same thing as far as when we look at each test individually, and of course, this is starting in third grade where it's related to STAR. We do have an area of opportunity as far as the masters, supporting our EV students, looking at those EV strategies that our amazing teachers are using. But we are, in most areas, again, showing that growth. Huge celebrations as far as science and social studies, because we were green, approaches the meet and masters level. So that brings us to TELPOS, and it seems like every year that I have stood in front of you, it's like, TELPOS. And so last year, they still, the state made the change for the writing piece, which was before rated holistically, meaning by teachers. Now everything is online for second through twelfth grade. And so we knew, along with speaking, that that was going to be a challenge as far as our students adapting to the test being online. So this is a wonderful report, and Dr. R., wherever you are at, this is her data sharing with me, so definitely a collaborative effort, where she pulled all of this information and compared us, kinder through second, to other districts within our region and state. And then it also is broken down to third through twelfth. So lots of numbers on here, but the one thing, or two things, that I want to highlight, Mr. T., let's see how I'm going to do with this. So I want to, and looking at the data, it's like we're going to celebrate the good things, but I do not want to shy away as far as the area that we need to focus on. And so when we look at the data, fourth grade as a district, not specific to any one campus, in all domains, you can see that we fell short compared to the region and state as far as looking at, again, the four domains, so listening, that was speaking, reading, and writing. Okay, so that is our area of opportunities. Our celebration is a ninth-grade campus, and I'm glad that y'all are here. All campuses, all grade levels, I firmly believe, did the best with the time, the resources that they had. And again, it's something that we're going to continue to grow in. We have a plan in place for this year, but I really want to celebrate ninth-grade campus, because they are dealing with time restraints as well, where they have a twenty-three-minute RTI block. And so they took it very in-depth, where they made sure that they had students that were going to use the program Summit K-12, and I'll tell you about that in a second, to make sure that they were in place and not having to worry about transition times. They were making best use of their time. They had the wonderful Ms. Matthews and Ms. Puga, who is the Spanish teacher on their campus, working directly with these students and the program. And I hope you don't mind me saying this, but we were a little frustrated when we didn't see the reclassification rate where we felt that it was going to be at. But looking at all four domains, and so these are students going into tenth grade, you can see that, again, in listening, Joshua, in comparison to the region and state, outperformed, and I'm looking specifically at that advanced, advanced type piece, because that's what we want our students to move towards. The speaking, again, outperformed. Reading was huge in compared to the region and state. And then the same thing with writing, and again, this is what was new to the test this year. So they have been my go-to campus as far as, and Mr. T., I might need you to come back up here, because my EV report is gone. I'm gonna let him go through that. So the reclassification piece, last year, we had three students reclassify. This year, still not the number that we want to be at, but it was ten. So we did make growth there, perfect, thank you, sir. And part of that is through the use of a program that we have bought with Title III funds, which is Summit K-12. And it is a prep program for our students that we purchased in grades third through ninth. So this way, again, they can be best prepared for the spring twenty-four administration of TELPOS. So let me get back to where I was at, and that's the reclassification. So then it brings us to the PD. Again, the third through ninth, we're focusing as far as student support with the Summit K-12, focusing on the EV strategies. But we also can't ignore our babies that are in tenth through twelfth. Because of some time constraints within those grade levels, the decision was made to invest as far as PD. So this is an outline as far as all PD that was offered and attended by teachers in our district. And so they had over sixty hours, again, they might have been tailored for elementary teachers, maybe for a secondary teacher, but a total of sixty hours that was specific to our EV population or teaching strategies. Very happy to say that we have not had to file a waiver, because we have the ESL certified teachers in place, again, serving our EV students. And so that brings us almost to the end, where our parent, family, and community involvement, and this is, of course, another part of our program that we take great pride in. We have our adult ESL and family literacy programs, and those are facilitated by Ms. Samantha Torres, who is our family district liaison. And so once a week, she brings families in. We have about, we have twenty-seven enrolled, twenty that attend consistently. But the two pieces with these programs is, of course, to promote literacy at home. And we are looking at five-level books. And then the second piece is the ESL. And when I look at this program, we have staff. Some of our custodial staff comes in the morning. They stay until it's time to go into work at nine-thirty or ten o'clock, whenever they're shifting in, because, again, that English proficiency, you know, they see the benefit with that. Also, last year, we had, in December last year, LMS was very fine in allowing us to host, we called it a nacho night. And so if you have food, we will come, and our students danced, and we have the secondary students read some of their poetry. And so it was a highlight and celebration as far as the activities, you know, that had been completed by their students, our parents were there. We had about seventy families attend that evening. And so in celebrating that, it was an opportunity for us to also share what is STAR and what is TELPOS. Because one of the things, our students, most of our students can tell you about TELPOS, but in having that conversation with the parents at times, there was that disconnect. And we are planning that event, again, in December of this year, and in Laughlin, if you are here, I will be making that phone call again to see if we can host it there. So the last part, of course, is what is our goal? This is where we were at for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. What is our goal for the twenty-three, twenty-four? And we always want to be aligned to what the goal, the vision is for the district. And so because of that, we want to make sure that our students are obtaining that ninety percent, or ninety percent of our students are at that approaches level, fifty percent at the masters level. And then, of course, in regards to TELPOS, it is something that we will continue to grow in with the support of Summit K-12. The goal is to have at least that ten students increase by fifty percent, which is great, but that's really only fifteen, and just me being honest, we want that number to be higher. And then for one-hundred percent of our students to show at least one-year growth in all language domains. So, do y'all have any questions in regard to the information I shared?
If I have any question?
Thank you.
Now that I want to thank so much, all the work.
It is a joy, it's a great team, Will, it's a great team, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that leads us into our next deal. We reviewed the Executive Region Eleven Executive Summer Report, and now that leads us to our hand presentation, which is Cattle Grove Elementary.
Hello, I'm the proud principal of Cattle Grove Elementary School. My name is Tanya Cherno, and I have my APs here, my assistant principal Jennifer Kyle, and intern is Silverman Terreros. We are so proud to get here tonight to tell you about a program that we started this year thanks to the professional development opportunities over the summer. And we learned about a program called Huddle. And just like in sports, you can huddle and you can get right when you figure out what the game plan is, we noticed there was a part in our students that needed a little bit more focus. And so I'm gonna let our video show you what Huddle is all about, and then I'll tell you a little bit more. What do you like about your Huddle group?
We get to learn about shine, how to wash our hands.
Yeah.
And because I get to see about Huddle group, I really like about being a new teacher in third grade, fourth, and fifth.
That's right, because she gets to be your Huddle leader for three years. What do you like about Huddle?
I like about Huddle because I like to meet good people, and they share about their lives and stuff. Which I really like about unique of their character, which is hard. That's what I like about Huddle group. And we do learn some stuff.
Wow.
And I love, what I love about Huddle group is they get to spend time with other people to work.
Huddle is super fun, because you can meet new friends, and you can meet new friends, and you can have fun learning new stuff, like washing your hands.
There you go.
And how the terms, how the terms can be in your body and safeties.
Good job.
What I like about Huddle group is we get to read and do new activities with our Huddle group.
Hi, my name is Holly, I'm a junior, and I'm a student.
Nice to meet you.
Would you like to come play with me and my friends?
Yeah.
I respect others.
And respect yourself.
Be kind.
A heart to be kind.
I couldn't remember why my grandma didn't talk to me.
Kind of shocked.
You listen to people that are telling stories.
Good.
So what we love about this program is that it does take students through three years of being with the same mentor between kindergarten and the second grade, so that's one. And then they graduate to an older group for grades three through five. So these students are making friends in different grade levels, which hardly ever happens, because they don't play together at recess or go to lunch together. They're meeting teachers in different grade levels, especially those who aren't their teacher, but someone who they can come to to be a mentor. And something that a lot of our students don't have at home is a very strong foundation at home with good parents and opportunities to ask questions and learn things. So some of the topics that we've been over this year so far, we've only had eight weeks so far, but the first one was, just to get to know you, learn each other's names, try to remember everybody in their group, and it's really neat to see them walking through the hallway and seeing other grade levels of one. levels, about, see, I know you, you know? So that's pretty cool. The second week, we talked about keeping healthy, because we noticed already right from the start, people were getting sick. So we tried to talk to them about washing hands, about go, flush, wash, and leave. Our procedures for bathroom behaviors. We also learned about respect and what that looks like, how to meet people, how to meet someone on the playground, how to invite someone to come play with you, because these are skills that somebody hasn't explicitly taught them before. Being a cooperative part of a group. You notice there are lots of activities. The teachers get a lesson planned every Friday, and then they, they do fun things with their team and try to get them to talk and take turns and listen to one another. And then last week was our upstanders, anti-bullying week. So we have a really fun lesson planned where we talked about how to be an upstander instead of a bystander, and how to stick up for the little guy and interrupt and go talk to the adults if you see somebody being mean to somebody else. So we really tried to teach them how to use their voice and how to be brave. And we hope that Huddle is just something that we continue for many, many years because we really believe in it.
Thank you very much. And now moving on to the best part of the year. Let's go for a move, and ask the recognition of our student.
Okay, our first recognition tonight is Luke Breedlove. Would you come on up here, Luke? And so Luke's parents are Sarah and Daniel Breedlove. And Luke is a senior at Joshua High School. And Luke has been named a commended student in the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. About thirty-four thousand commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Commended students placed among the top fifty thousand students who entered the 2024 competition by taking the 2022 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Those being named commended students have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. These students represent a valuable national resource, recognizing their accomplishments as well as the key role their schools play in their academic development. It is vital to the advancement of educational excellence in our nation. We hope that this recognition will help broaden their educational opportunities and encourage them as a continued part to the, continue their pursuit of academic, academic success. Let's give a round of applause for Luke. And in honor of that, we've got a nice little mic right here, Luke. And so congratulations, man. All right, our next group is the Nichols Middle School Boys Soccer Team. The, yeah, come on up here, guys. So Nichols Middle School Boys Soccer Team is led by Coach Chambers. A long time coming, the Nichols Middle School Team is the first boys' sports team to win a district championship. They finished undefeated with a record three, zero, and one. The roster includes Matthias Elizondo, Holland Hot, Tristan Howard, Cohen Hunnold, Caleb Moser, Guillermo Renteria, Bryson Alred, Simon Angelis, Maverick Boatman, Kay Boone, Uriel Chavez, Nate Chium, Zaden Dickerson, Eli Einhaus, Jared Eskamia, Demetrius Folsom, Nate Gonzalez, Carson Kilcoin, Luther Matt, Maverick Ramsey, Gedeel Santana, and Cole Southern. So Chambers is just going to stay right up here. Next group, we're going to recognize our Nichols Middle School Seventh Grade Cross Country Team. Nichols Middle School Seventh Grade Boys finished first place in district, winning the district championship. They dominated all year long and finished in places second, fifth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth individually. Congratulations to our runners, Lucas Ramsey, Kason Murphy, Murphy, Armando Vigarola, Jaime Duran, Louis Romero, and Noah Moser. All right, our next group is Nichols Middle School Eighth Grade Cross Country Team. Y'all come on up. Our Eighth Grade Cross Country Team is led by Coach Chambers. And our Eighth Grade Boys finished second place in district, placing third, ninth, twelfth, twentieth, and twenty-fourth individually, all running two miles in fifteen minutes and four seconds or faster. Great job to those runners, and those are Cohen Hunnold, Peyton Ray, Jackson Bryan, Max Beth, and Tristan Howard. Okay, our next group is our Joshua High School Principals and Assistant Principals. We have some of the best here in the state, and we're thankful for their commitment to our schools, to our district, to our staff, and most importantly, to our students. And we certainly couldn't do it without their leadership. So as I call your name, will you come forward? For our high school, we got Ms. Celeste Neal, Darielle Urban, Michael Clayton, Carrie Trevino. And with our Principal Residence Grant, we have Catty Jones, who is our intern. The next group, next individuals, is our Ninth Grade Campus, and we've got Melissa Kinnear and Lori Matthew. And then New Horizon, we've got Tanya Long. Laughlin Middle School, we've got Jane Seemster, Shelley Douglas, Emma Rogers, and Kyle Smoke. Nichols Middle School, we've got Tammy Watts, Chris Conley, and Kristen Morrison. Cattle Grove Elementary, we've got Tanya Cherno, Jennifer Piles, and our Principal Residence Grant intern, we've got Silverman Terreros. Elder Elementary, we've got Kim Cassidy and Demise Narcisse. Moore Joshua, we've got Tracy Green, Heath Kelly, and Stacy Smith. Plum Creek, we've got Shelley Green and Jennifer Leonard. And Staples Elementary, we've got Kate Howe and Amanda Payton. All right, Kyle, you can pitch over, buddy. All right.
Do you make two rows?
Squeeze it.
Two rows, guys, two rows.
Okay, at this point, according to the board meeting, we have the public forum. The board encourages comments from citizens at the, of the district, or employees, anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of the group. They do so at this time. The board asks that comments pertaining to public education issues in no longer than three minutes. And the person we got up is Julian Gurew.
First, I'd like to express my sincere gratitude to y'all for promoting a strong work ethic, respect, and caring for others. Sadly, this has become a rarity in our state and nation. My family's in the process of moving, and while house hunting, it was important for us to stay in JASD. Repeatedly, we noticed the same house effects in the same town, yet a different school system yields a higher price for JASD every time, as much as it hurts my pocketbook, and it doesn't like this so much. This speaks volumes for the quality of staff and programs at JASD, and y'all should be proud of this. I became aware of JASD's support program last year that is receiving increasing promotion this year. This program encourages laziness at a minimum. I'm surprised and disappointed to see this promoted, as seems to run what's commutative to this program, to this school district. The program I'm referring to is SEL, Social Emotional Learning. SEL boasts an effective way to help students manage their emotions. SEL assesses their emotional temperature by repeatedly asking students personal questions and interviewing, intervening per protocol. Bottom line of this question is, do you feel like participating in school today? My understanding is there is a classroom at Plum Creek where students can go eat snacks and play games if they don't fill up to completing school at work that day. I have a friend whose daughter ended up in that classroom several times. How does this benefit the student? And imagine the staffing shortage if this program was implemented for adults. Rather than support our students, SEL is the first step of the liberal agenda to destroy our children. SEL leads to DEI, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. DEI encourages children to identify and then wield power from their accumulated victim lens. The natural progression from DEI is to transy our children. Maybe you wouldn't be so sad if you changed your gender. This is some perpetua, I personally witnessed several students' lives be destroyed by this agenda at our previous school. This is also an epidemic throughout our nation. No one questions that our children face a very difficult world to navigate, yet not all student programs, not all student support programs are helpful. I implore you not to tear down the excellent school system y'all have worked hard to build.
Thank you very much. Second person, I have Kimberly Williams.
I first would like to say thank you for your time and consideration. My name's Kimberly, and I have two children, two of which attend Cattle Grove Elementary. They are in second and sixth grade. We moved here from Washington State in May of 2021, and we knew our children would experience some level of culture shock in society here in Texas, but what did not anticipate was them experiencing it at school. There are many rules and guidelines in our district that are perpetuating gender stereotypes and forcing our children to stifle their individuality in order to adhere to these outdated rules. The rules I'm referring to fall under the grooming and dress codes. They can be considered not only gender biased, but biased to race and religion as well. These include rules that explicitly state that one gender can do or wear something and the other cannot. My second grader went to school a few weeks ago with his nails painted. I prepared him for what other kids might say, and he decided that he was confident enough in his decision that he wanted to go to school with his fingernail painted. On the first day, he came home and said that a child teased him about what he had on his fingers, but that he was okay and he wanted to keep them. The second day, I got a call from his teacher. She asked me to speak with him on the phone, and I was met with tears. My child was pleading to me, mommy, I miss you, and I just want to come home. I later found out that there were other kids bothering him. I let his teacher know when she went to the administration. They were unfortunately bound by these rules and required to tell my child that he was in the wrong. They were so kind to him, and they handled the bullying. But in that moment, my child, the victim of bullying, was defeated. I'm sure we're all aware of the dressing and grooming codes, but did you know that there are federal laws against this? They state that dress codes cannot treat boys and girls differently, and that they should not only be gender mutual on paper, but equally enforced amongst all students. On July seventh, 2022, seventeen civil rights groups and youth organizations sent letters to every superintendent in the state of Texas. They urged the districts to rewrite their dressing grooming codes to eliminate the gender, race, and religion discrimination. These letters talked about the harm done to our students with these rules, how they're unlawful and unconstitutional. Children all over Texas have been harshly disciplined for growing out their hair, painting their nails, or in other words, expressing their culture, beliefs, or individuality. One definition of bullying in JASD policy is an act that infringes on the rights of a victim at school. So these rules are not only unfair, unlawful, they are contradictory to other written policy. Our children deserve a kind and welcoming environment where their individuality is celebrated instead of touched. Thank you. That I agree with you.
Patricia Anthony, she should be there in place you left. What do you intend to do, subjects? Consider, consent, consent, identity items?
Okay, so the only thing we have here is the minutes of our previous meeting from September eighteenth. We have no budget amendments, nor do we have any purchases over fifty thousand. And so my recommendation would be approve the consent items as discussed.
So then?
Motion by Ms. Brooke to hear a second. Second by Ms. Wilson. Any further discussion or questions? For the first time in twenty-two years. That's the only agenda item we have. Blaming on the state because they're behind the times and all the stuff that we normally do this month, and it's a pleasure, haven't got proof yet. Next month will be a busy month. So at this time, the board would convene a full session to discuss items of hot right in front of the Texas Code Meeting, Act of Texas Governor's Law, Section five five one zero zero one through five. in front of the Texas Code Mean Act, Texas Governor's Code, Section 551001 through 551.
Ranger, let's go Cowboys.